It's breaking on a metal cap there that if that metal cap broke loose and anybody was in there, they might not wake up the next morning. So I know we're looking into that and we've been, we've got some information that says it's not, it's hazardous. And as a lawyer that deals with those kinds of cases, I don't even like that the fact that it's just hazardous, but that it's stable. But that's the way I've heard it, that it's stable and, but it's hazardous. And then yesterday again was brought up that creature they call the.
Muffin montra.
Well, I'm not going to say that. It's a, it's a big device that chews up sewage and gets it through the pipelines. You all know what that is, but there's apparently more problems with that. And I thought that had been fixed. But here's the big one for everybody to chew on, and that is the parking issue at the courthouse. I forget how many places there are for jurors, but it's like in the teens. And so they have a big jury trial going on over there. And they've had, they've had problems with that because there's jurors who come in there that don't want to participate because they can't afford to pay parking tickets every day. Because some of them have to park out on the streets. So as you all recall, we did have a discussion about security, which was a fence, but that apparently wasn't, isn't, they're not ready for that yet. So the suggestion made to me recently was, it has been more than recently, it's been made three or four times, and I've, I've kind of didn't want to think about it too hard, but after what God explained to me about the goings on now with where do these jurors park? And so they had three jury trials, and one of them went on, but what their concern is if all three of those jury trials would have gone on this week, they would have had multiple problems with parking for the jurors and scaring the jurors because they don't want tickets. And we talked about where they would be given something to put in their car window, but nobody wants anybody to know they're a juror in a murder case. And so the idea comes up, well, maybe we need a parking garage over there. So I really do think it's something that has to be given some thought by this commission. I have no idea what a parking garage would cost. I know the city built that one up there, and nobody likes it, but it's because it has low ceilings. But the old towns are changing, and I, you know, I practice the kind of law that they're, they're having trials with over there, these serious criminal cases. One of the, there's one guy in jail, up at the jail, that's been in there three years and has never had a trial because of his mental health. So now what's happening is they're stacking up down there in Evanston. And this is causing more problems, causing problems for the jail, causing problems for the courts. But this issue of parking is not, it's a serious issue, Mr. Chairman, it really is. So this is, these are just discussions I've had, and are certainly, certainly discussions I think that the commissioners have to consider very seriously. The other thing that I have mentioned to Chair, Mr. Millen about the fairgrounds was, is is that I checked my notes and checked our, some of the things we said about that budget, but one of the big things was they want to redo all those bathrooms out there. And that's what affects our public the most. And we, we didn't allow a budget for that.
We did.
We did?
Mm-hmm.
For all of them?
Not for all of them. Plus they're, they're, so that was one point that I didn't make with the Fair Board was that they are proceeding forward. They're going to get in touch with a mechanical engineer, have the bathroom designed so that it'll actually function properly.
Will they need more money?
Eventually, yeah. Because they're only doing just over half, right? So that'll be, but it'll give them a good start.
I do, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
Real quick, you mentioned the jail roof. You guys recently had a department head meeting. Did Tom say anything more about the roof?
No, they're, they're basically looking into it. They're waiting to hear back from the engineer. They're trying to get hold of the original engineer that designed it. And if that couldn't be done, then they would go to, they could go to a local one, but they had to go back to the original and find out if he said that that was okay to start with. So, so, no, not at this point, no.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know, Mr. Chairman, but in my practice as an attorney, when there's something hanging over your head like this that's insured, it's, most insurance companies want you to tell them about it in advance. So it may be that we need to alert warm to this potential hazard. Most insurance policies have that in them in terms of if you know something, they want to know at their earliest possible moment, you know there could be a problem. But I, I've, I've said that I think that it's going to take $5 million in repairs up there for everything that's needed. And it seems to be continuing. I sit here again, that's just a guess on my part, but I, I would like to see us have something in reserve for that. Thank you.
Commissioner North.
The only thing I'm going to bring up is that we did take our ad lorum tax, and we have not got that money invested, and I would recommend that we do. We don't have to start making payments back to the state until I believe December of '25, either '25 or '24. So, but right now with the interest rates available and, and stuff, I would recommend that we strongly consider having to invest that in one of our accounts so we can actually make some interest off of instead of it just sitting in the general fund. So, the other thing I was gonna, yeah. The other thing I was going to mention is that with the parks, they, they have started work clearing trees and moving stuff up there where the Nordic Lodge is. And they're making good progress right now, and we'll see what the weather has to do, how much it allows us to get done before this winter hits. So, other than that, I'll save the rest of my comments till later.
You're going to mention that million.
The only thing I have is that I'm here for the work session, and I will not be here for the business meeting tonight. Dave will be running the meeting. Did you have something else?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. We're a little bit behind right now. Tim Shank? Actually, I probably got a better mic over there anyway, so.
Good afternoon. Go ahead. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We're excited to start providing updates frequently to you about what's going on with the building. Things have been moving very quickly since the July 1 start time. We will be having a presentation by MOA to the Board of Health on this Thursday. The Executive Committee has provided a lot of guidance as well as the Design Advisory Board, which, or group, which is consisting of our managers. So they were making sure we're getting a lot of input on things that work. And so it's just a lot going on, very excited. But Tim is going to provide kind of a more standard presentation, especially from the architectural viewpoint rather than the functional. So, Tim.
Great, thank you. Well, again, thank you. It's exciting to get rolling on this project, and I appreciate your support of me in this role as the owner's representative. So I attended my first team meeting last Wednesday, yes, this past Wednesday afternoon with everyone, and we moved through a lot of information rather quickly. Oh, sorry. I'm used to converse and you're, that's far apart. And some of the items that we talked about, the geotechnical assessment has been completed. They've drilled the site. The initial findings are clay, which is unfortunate, but anticipated for that part of town. We'll have the final report in about three weeks. The clay will affect the foundation system, but everyone was anticipating a drilled pier structural floor system, which actually plays into the building design because they're talking about a crawl, accessible crawl space where they can run some ductwork and other utilities so that it's not a huge burden. But it is some additional costs. As I mentioned, the Design Advisory Group's been working hard. We talked about evaluation of user needs. We talked, discussed required adjacencies. There were a few things that shifted around a bit. Space requirements tweaked, which is expected at this early stage of design, but nothing out of the ordinary. Everyone's getting a better sense of the process and what occurs in the building. And so there's been a lot of roundtable discussion about that, which is really good. We talked about some potential colors and finishes for both staff and public areas as they start to think about the overall design to try to start instilling those thoughts in the users' minds. And actually, there were some, some nice options that were presented. So I was happy to see that this early. A lot of times it doesn't happen this quickly. Then we talked about the exterior design concepts. They have two concepts right now that they're looking at. I think it was the, was it the first or second? I don't know if they were numbered, but there, there was a, I guess consensus on the exterior look and feel of the building, trying to make it more open, flowing for public access and availability of use. They've identified space that can be built at a later time if necessary, depending on funding requirements. So I thought that process went well. Replat, I think you've all seen an email that I forwarded. Evidently, the city has requested now that the site, the pieces that you have for the building be replatted so that it's all contiguous as of one, as that was not, as I understand, indicated or needed during the selection process. MOA Architecture has provided an additional services request for providing those services in the amount of $7,400. I've had a chance to review that, and I think everything is in order. So I'm not quite sure how you all will want to move forward on, forward with that, but my recommendation would be, it's unfortunate, but that it does need to be done.
Tim, why aren't the city doing this since they already have the points? Since we already resurveyed everything and they've got all the points?
Mr. Chairman, if I can respond to Commissioner North?
Commissioner Nicklaus.
We had a meeting with basically all the interested folks, including MOA and the city. I think Wyatt was even there. Anyway, this was back in, in August. And at that time, we looked at what was the legal description, and you are correct, Commissioner North, that we have a legally described parcel, although my understanding is that it's something like meets and bounds. And what we're trying to do now and into the future is, instead of this being essentially part of the Highland Park Cemetery block, because we're carving off eight acres of that, we're, we're now going to call it something else. And then for, in perpetuity, it'll be a separate legal description. I hated to agree with the recommendation of the city because I know it'd be a little more money, but I think it's the appropriate thing to do from a real estate title perspective.
Yeah, I don't, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I'm not disagreeing that it shouldn't be done. I'm just wondering why the city's not doing it.
The city manager just walked in and asked.
You know, I, I think, Commissioner North, the reality is that it's county property now at this point, and like in just about any other circumstance, the owner of the property would be responsible for that. Now, maybe we didn't negotiate tough enough early on before we actually acquired the property that was donated to the county. But I think the ship has sailed in trying to ask the city for, for payment on, or to cover that cost.
Well, I'm just going to respectfully disagree with you on that point, but, you know, especially since they've got all the points, the survey points that are already there. And replating, that is not that big of a deal, especially when it's an internal operation. So that's just, that's just my two cents on that.
And I think that even the city would have to hire outside, this is, I believe, WLC's engineering cost. This isn't MOA or the city getting $7,400. So I, I think, you know, in any case, someone would have to do the replat work. And in this case, I think it's the subcontractor for, for MOA on the project.
Okay. Moving along, Anna's group is, well, and, and the design team are working with the State Health Department to ensure that all the health care factors are considered, even if the facility may not require that. We're making sure upfront that those are addressed. And the county's legal group has received the title commitments for the additional three parcels. So we have that information now. With that, I'd like to visit briefly about construction manager at risk and see if you all have questions about that. It's a process that I believe would be appropriate for this scale of project in bringing a contractor on board early. Through that process, they become essentially part of the team, even though they're under separate agreement, to assist in pricing, starting immediately on conceptual drawings and following that through, making recommendations. Oh, good, everyone woke back up. Making recommendations for areas that there could be savings, ways to deal with that, that still works within the bounds of the design. We've utilized that a lot in our work and find it to be very worthwhile. It's a kind of a lengthy process to get someone on board. Just as an example, this is the pile of paper that goes out to the potential CMARs that they have to fill out and provide data for when they submit their proposal. The contract itself is a two-part agreement. The first part would be the only part that anyone would sign when they're brought on, and that's for what we call pre-construction services, where they assist the design team and the owner in developing costs, scenarios, assistance. And once the design is complete and they've put together what they call their guaranteed maximum price or GMP, that can be reviewed. And if everyone's in agreement with that, then you sign part two of the agreement, which then moves them forward into the construction phase. So the, the opportunity that presents itself there is, let's say a selection has been made, someone's working hard, but you just can't get the numbers where you want them to be. You're not aligned with anyone after these pre-construction services. And then you can look at alternatives to go out to what we would call hard bid as an option, as an opportunity to look elsewhere for pricing. So based on the complexity of the project, I would recommend that this be a good delivery method to pursue for the project, and ask that you consider that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner Lord.
Two questions, really. Will the doors be open to this in the year 2026?
It's supposed to be yes, so that we meet all those deadlines. And that's the other advantage, working with someone up front, is that they're working not only on the pricing, but they're also looking at scheduling and how to attack the project so that it's done on time. You can actually, if you prefer, pursue some early bid packages and start like dirt work, underground utilities, those types of things ahead of schedule, so that when they're ready to really move forward, then, then you can turn them loose with the rest of it. And you'll, we've found that it saves, it's the opportunity to save time.
Less add cost to everything?
We've never seen that as a problem, no, because they're still bidding all of the individual packages. So as I mentioned, earthwork, you're still going to go out and ask for competitive pricing with the documents from earthwork contractors. It's just that what they'll do typically is they'll pull those out of the overall drawing package, drawing and specification package, and issue those to specific subcontractors that would be interested in that work. So that's, we've never seen that as a complication or an additional cost.
Thank you.
So you had two?
I think that was two.
Oh, was that the second one? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I, I think CMAR is the way to go on this based on what I know, so I appreciate that.
Lisa Hubbard had also given us a little background on that previously. So it's something we've heard before as a commission. And I, I don't know then what would the next step be? Do we, it looks like there's a package that's being put together. Is that then, you know, what, what happens from there?
Okay, well, we've had discussions about this from a scheduling standpoint. I've already spent time on the request for proposals portion, just to get a jump on it and to help my brain get deeper into the project. And we've looked at some tentative dates. And so we've talked about the potential of being able to issue this document by the 3rd of October, pre-proposal meetings on the 11th, the last day that they can submit questions, October 19th, and then the proposals will be due October 26th. That would give us time then to review those, make a decision if interviews are required, and be ready to make a presentation and recommendation to the Commissioner Board by November 7th, which I think if we looked at the calendar correctly, targets a meeting date, or make that recommendation prior to that date for you to consider.
Has Legal seen that document or reviewed it?
I did send just the RFP to Jared, the draft, so that he'd have a chance to take a look at it. But if this is the direction you want to go, I'll set up a time to sit down and we'll go through all of this.
This is the direction we want to go? Commission?
Sounds like it to me.
I just got a question about what, what will that cost?
To, oh, this is part of my services.
If I have to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Nicklaus.
Thank you. Tim, at some point, we need to pick up the conversation of a commissioning agent again. And so I don't know if you were prepared to do that today. But, and I know based upon what I've heard on being on the executive building, the Building Executive Committee, is we have some time, but I don't know if you had a report for us on that issue.
You bet. And I was planning, if we had, if time allowed, to at least discuss that with you, to let you know my understanding of the process and, and the reasoning behind commissioning on a building, especially when you have complicated systems within the building for controls. We all know that there can be problems with mechanically, primarily mechanical, electrical systems in a building once it's occupied, and you have to work through what we call the bugs to get those things sorted out. The advantage with the commissioning agent is you bring a third party in, typically consists of engineers and field people that have a real strong understanding of building systems. They start immediately in evaluating the design for those mechanical, electrical systems in the building, have their reviews, comments. We have meetings with them. They make recommendations. Everyone goes back, reevaluates. But the whole process really is to make sure that you get the building to a point that when it's time to occupy, all of those bugs have been, or the majority of those have been worked through. They, their responsibility is to test the entire system, run it through all of the options that it's capable of doing, to make sure that it's functioning right. And then at the completion of the 11-month warranty on the project after it's been completed, they come back in and do a retest and evaluation to make sure that it's all functioning before the contractor's 12-month warranty period has expired. So we've, we've found it to be very valuable. It's something that the work that I've done at the university over the years, it's a automatic requirement. But it is important to bring in a third party so that they don't have ties to anyone but you as the owner.
Okay. I think we're good moving forward, at least getting with Jared and with the RFP. And let's review that and move that forward.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, in relation to stance to schedule, like what you were asking about earlier, is the action items where the replat, if we move forward without the CMAR and then the commissioning, all of those are just keeping us within that guideline of the calendar that we're following.
And I think we've agreed on getting the replat done, correct?
I'd say it's fine with me.
So, Mr. Chairman, it looks like we, we didn't get the, the amendment or additional service number one on the consent agenda for this evening. So if you'd like to approve it this evening, we'd have to amend the agenda to include that.
Just so you know, it works this year.
I think so, yeah.
Are we able to get that on there tonight then?
If, yeah, if the commission amends the agenda and approves that, then we can, we can get that on. We do have it, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing us this work session. Joining me today, I have several stakeholders from the library, the Board of Trustees, and the Library Foundation. And then assuming that you may have questions about the request for funding that we submitted. I have Mike Step is the president of the Trustees, and John Griffith is the president of our Library Foundation. So several months ago, I think it was several months ago, that I came and visited with you just to reengage discussions about the need for a new library. And at that time, you've kind of placed a ball in my court to move forward and get some information together with you. And one of those things that you requested was an updated needs assessment. I think that would be helpful for your considerations. And that assessment is included in the request for funding packet that you have received. So in addition to that assessment in the packet, the trustees laid out what I consider to be a very straightforward request. But I want to call your attention to several key things before I invite your questions about what it is that the library is asking. The first thing I want to call your attention to is the library is well-used. And all of this is documented in the information and packet that I already gave you. But the library is well-used, and that is documented in the needs assessment and in the letter from the trustees. The current building is unable to meet the community's needs. That is documented by the collection numbers. We have a collection of over 192,000 items. We circulate over half a million items annually and have visits 228,000 plus in the fiscal year 2020, which was, as we all remember, hard hit by COVID. So we are well-used. Also documented in this packet is the condition, the poor condition of the current facility. I've included in the packet a 2013 facility condition report that was put together. I've included in the packet a 2013 facility condition report that was put together by MOA Architecture, and that report classified the building as being in crisis failure in 2013. Also noting the poor condition is the fire, the Casper Fire EMS, and their letter both in 2014 and then again earlier this year, requesting remediation or for us to address the facility conditions that were outlined in the condition report from 2013. I would call your attention to that letter that says at the bottom that the letter requests a formal plan be developed to address the other life safety issues identified in the MOA report. After a lot of soul-searching and looking at these reports and information, really the current facility is no longer capable of safely housing the public library, and it is our opinion that the only viable solution to address the laundry list of facility issues is for the construction of a new building and for us to vacate the current one. And then finally, as you know, there is a grant opportunity that is available. I am working on the application, which will be submitted in the near future. Under this grant, there is a total of $12.6 million available for Wyoming Libraries for capital construction. And any award under that grant would require certain timelines to be met, which creates an urgency in the request of the Trustees in their letter, and they ask for an initial $3.5 million to allow us to begin the RFQ and design process. So I guess, one last thing before I invite you to share with me your questions, is it's really important to note, as I mentioned before, this is not a new need, this is a need that's been long discussed in Neutrona County, and as years pass, construction costs just escalate. It is my opinion that now is the time to move forward with this project. So I hope that you've all had time to review the packet that was sent to you, and I'd like to invite you to ask any questions that you have about the proposal that we submit.
Any questions?
Thank you. Well, I'm for a new library. I am not for putting the tax on the people, though. But that said, I'm 100% for the new library. It was interesting, just as an aside, I went to Canada last week and visited a library in Vancouver. And boy, is it a magnificent creature. And what they did there is they had a contest, and the contest was for architects to, to come up with a design. And the one they chosen, guess what it looks like? The Roman Coliseum. And then it has, it has the Roman Coliseum, and then there's another bigger structure. And I wasn't used to some of their way they designate things, but they have a public house in there, which is a bar and a restaurant in one side of it, and some other office spaces, but just, I asked just people on the street about it, you know, and they all thought it was fantastic. You need a library, you got to have a library for your children and for all of your people. And they seem to have a pretty good grip and understanding why they needed to finance that thing, and I have no idea what it costs, but I got to believe it's over $100 million, because it's way bigger than the one you're suggesting. But I, I always have people ask me, well, isn't our library good enough? I mean, and do people read books anymore? And so I know that's a hurdle for you all to deal with publicly, to be able to explain that, and I try to do the best I can, but I'm not nearly as good as you and your Board of Directors. And John, I figured I would just be able to hear from you today concerning your email. I wasn't ignoring you, but I figured you were showing up. So I don't know, I know where we have money. Now, Commissioners in Neutrona County are, are very conservative people when it comes to money, and they should be, and so am I. But we have close to $100 million somewhere that we're going to have to decide how to invest it, what to do with it, how we use it, and that kind of thing. But I guess your job is to do your sales job on the Commissioners and on the public, because, boy, do I get a lot of people saying, boy, I don't, it's been voted down twice, why are you considering it again? I said, well, it's, you have to remember, there's two things, this is what I say to people, that, that I do believe we need a new library, and I need, we need a nice library for various reasons, and I try to outline why I think that we need one, and things that are happening in your library that the general public just have no clue. You'd think they would, but they don't. And that, that you're not going to get taxed for this new library. Now, I don't know whether there'll end up being a tax request or not on this kind of money, but, so I'm just sitting here hoping you, rather than ask us questions, is what's your best sales pitch?
So I guess-
This is on you, I think this is on YouTube, isn't it, Mr. Chairman?
It is.
So that, you know, it can be out there for the public, and they can hear it, as we say, from the horse's mouth.
Sure.
That's just a Wyoming's way of saying things.
That's kind of a-
Ms. Scroggins, I mean-
That's the way I've always said it as well.
You're the chief person here, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, sir. So we did put together this packet so that you could have all the information that I felt like you needed to consider our request, but as far as, like, what would my pitch be? So we know that the citizens, both in Neutrona County, just anywhere, citizens need access to education, to workforce productivity and services, and job skills and job retraining. And we learned through COVID, the increased need for the capacity to partner with the health community, to both offer health and wellness classes, but also monitoring opportunities that help people be well, and that promotes both individual wellness and wellness in your community. So those are the top three things that I would say are part of an elevator speech, the ability for a public library to impact and empower people in the workforce, in education, and in health and health monitoring. That being said, to the point of, do people use a library? I would point to the statistics. Our current statistics are actually even higher than what was included in your packet. I was just trying to use the same information, the same benchmark year throughout, and so I went to the last report that's available online, so if somebody went online to the state library to check, they're looking at the same numbers, and that eliminates any confusion. But our statistics on circulation and attendance at programs and the numbers of program offer that we offer all exceed the national average for a library of our size, and that is when it's compared against other similarly sized communities across the nation, and then other similarly sized communities in our region. We are outperforming almost all of them, we're on the top side of that curve. So that answers that question of, is there a need and is there a desire? So I do recognize that there are people that choose not to come in and use a library and have their own access to resources in their own way, and that is awesome, and that is great that they have that ability and that capacity. We are there for them, for the times when they have something that they don't have access to, but really, we're there for everybody else, the ones who wouldn't otherwise have access. So we are champions for the underserved population, for those in our demographic that need an extra leg up, if you will, to kind of go back to the horse analogy. We are there for mothers and caregivers of young children who are looking to prepare for kindergarten readiness, which then, in turn, helps them with educational success all the way through graduation rates, which, as we know, is tied to literacy and education, is directly tied to incarceration rates. The more educated your community, the more literate your community, the lower your incarceration rates. So, so that addresses that part, right? And then there's the, you know, through the pandemic, we learned the need for flexibility in both a facility, a public facility such as the library, needs to be flexible enough to be able to pivot and respond to any given situation. We were all faced with a situation that we did not expect, and sadly, the constraints in the library did not allow us, allow us to pivot and shift and change. And the library itself is old and deteriorating, and we do have, I don't know if it's an order to comply, but we do have a directive from Casper Fire EMS that says you have to address these facility conditions. So without constructing a new library, I think it's cost prohibitive to invest the amount of money it would take to remediate the current facility and end up in a building that continues to be too small to offer the robust services the community needs and in a parking lot where oftentimes people can't even find parking.
Mr. Poplik is here, and I haven't had a chance to talk to him about this, but you mentioned a big factor, and that is the cost of remediating this current library, and I agree with you. I mean, it depends on what it will cost, if it's in the millions of dollars, which it may very well be, that would certainly have an even larger positive impact on me to figure out a new library. But I, don't you have, is, did I, do I remember you explaining to me you have a place up there where kids can come up, learn how to record, use their own music and stuff like that?
We do. So, you know, we are, we are tied and we're cramped, but we are using every little bit of space that we have. So we have, in the original building, or the design of the current building, there are several alcoves that were just intended to be offset spaces, open space. Those have been recaptured and claimed as, two of them are meeting rooms and one is a recording studio. Of course, that being said, HVAC prevents us from fully enclosing to the top, so to allow for ample air circulation or the required air circulation, it's open at the top. But one of those alcoves is a recording studio, so it is both an audiovisual recording studio where somebody, an entrepreneur, small business, can come and record a commercial.
See, I think that's fantastic.
Yeah.
But I don't think people know that.
I know. I tell you, we have an amazing marketer on staff who, she, she works so diligently and so efficiently to get the word out. It's just incredibly hard, incredibly challenging to get the word out to the community. Those who know seems to know a lot about what we do, and those who don't seem to continue to lack. But we are doing more and more outreach opportunities, which that's a way to spread the word. We were fortunate enough, through a couple of grants, thanks to our foundation, to purchase another outreach vehicle, and the more you get librarians out in the community telling and showing and demonstrating what it is that we do, that we are more than just books, although the 192,000-plus items in our collection, certainly we are books, but we are more than just books, and the outreach expansion-
You even notarize things for people, don't you?
We do.
You have a notary there, people can go in-
We have multiple notaries. We're a passport processing, application processing facility.
Another thing I don't think people know about, that's why I'm asking you to-
I love it. It's like you're, you're helping me be a good commercial, thank you. But it is, it's true, it's important.
Well, it's an important, it's an important piece of a-
Well, in our makerspace, our makerspace is an important-
Important piece of the community that cares about its people, truly.
And our makerspace is an important opportunity for learners of all ages to have hands-on STEAM and STEM activities where they learn science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And I would say that is something that even our fine city of Casper, when they did their Generation Casper Master Planning, that is something that they have included as something that our community needs, because in addition to great learning opportunities, it is workforce development and business development.
Commissioner Nickle, listen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, first of all, I think you did a really nice job in response to Mr. Laird's question about asking for your sales pitch, so thank you. I think that was a, a great, robust response, and I hope a lot of people are tuning in or were tuning in for that. You also, you and, and the board put together a really nice package and have presented us with some information that we already knew in part. You did follow up on a request that the Commission asked, which was, the ball's in your court, go back, dust off the facility needs, you know, thing, and, and try and dial it in, so, so you've done that. But I think the question today is, really pertains to a timing issue, as I understand it, that you're looking at applying for federal funds, there's 12.6, and you're seeking roughly 10. How likely is it that 10 is a realistic number and that you might end up with 2.5 or something like that?
Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. Actually, I'm going to be a little more aggressive than 10. I'm asking, there's 12.6 available, and I'm asking for 12.6. I think there's a good chance that Neutrona County will receive a sizable award. I can't even begin to guess the amount. I don't think that Neutrona County would receive 2 million. I think that when I put 10 in the packet, I think asking for 12.6, I, I feel comfortable saying would probably get something close to 10. But that's just me saying that. I'm not part of the Committee, obviously, submitting that. But the reasons I have for saying that is because this 12.6 million dollar pot of funds, which are federal funds, being administered by the state of Wyoming for capital projects, is limited to applicants for libraries. Those libraries have to meet certain criteria, and our project meets all of the criteria that is set out in front of us. Additionally, I anticipate ours to be the largest project being submitted. That would have the greatest impact for the investment of these funds, that would give the state an opportunity to have a showcase project that they could point to and say, this is what we accomplished with these funds. And I think that's an important thing to note, because during the discussion phase, there was some discussion about how that 12.6 million dollar pot of money would be allocated or divided up. And one of those discussions was, hey, maybe we take X number of dollars, like $150,000, and give that across the board to every library, so every library can do some kind of a project that would address the needs set out in the grant requirements. And that was shot down, or that was not allowed, because it was noted that doing so would dilute the impact while it spreads it out across the state, it all would be a minor impact across the state, and they were hoping to use this 12.6 million dollars to be able to have a great impact project. So I believe that the desire is to have one or two projects that are pretty significant, that can have a, have a big impact. And again, I go back to Neutrona County, we have over 80,000 residents in Neutrona County.
Well, let me, let me just interrupt if I can, because I have some other questions, but I, the SLIB board members, who I understand would be making the award, is that-
No, sir.
Who would be making the decision?
So, well, maybe it is the SLIB, but it's been explained to me this way, that the, the state library will have one representative that primarily acts as oversight, but then there'll be one representative from the workforce, workforce community, one representative from the education community, one representative from the healthcare community, and one representative, just so you don't have an even number. And I don't know who that would be. But I do know that the grant will be administered or run, it's being run through the YDOT, because they have experience with capital construction projects with federal funding, and they know how to run those programs, so, I don't know, maybe somebody from there, I have no clue.
Well, let me just say, my experience from last fall with the SLIB board and the, the whole process to receive federal funds, I think we originally thought we might get more than 10 million for the Health Department building. Then it looked like, well, okay, let's, we've got a good chance at 10, and, but for our state treasurer, who kind of resurrected it, we, we were really close to getting zero. So we ended up getting less than five, and we're grateful for that, but I just want you to be realistic, and maybe you are, but I, you know, the, the 10 sounds like an awful big percentage of 12.6. So my, I guess my, that's an observation. You, you're asking us, I believe, to immediately allocate 3.5 million to begin the RFQ and design process.
Yes.
I've got to tell you that- I've got to tell you that whether it's the detention center and what we may have in front of us there, the basically $9 million we're still looking for, for the Health Department, some of the other things that we've got in front of us, plus we've got a whole lot of roads out there, and we were having some issues with some of the flooding we had. It's really a big ask, I think, of the commission for 3.5 right now, today, or tonight. I'm not sure where we'd get that money, and I don't know that that's your job, but do you have any suggestions on where we would, A, come up with 3.5, and B, the $31 million that you're looking for from the county?
So, kind of, but not really. How's that funny answer? It is my understanding, but I don't know, I don't really know this for sure, but it is my understanding, when I attended a Chamber of Commerce banquet quite some time ago, that there was some money that was being set aside for a library project by the county commission at that time. That was a statement that was publicly made. So I assume that if that, in fact, is the case, that you may already have money set aside as some seed money for a library project. And I would propose it comes from that.
Well, Commissioner Milne just walked in, and Commissioner North, the two of them have been here the longest. I'm not immediately sitting here today recalling such a fund, but maybe there are some other conversations.
I don't know if it was a fund. It was a stated intention.
Lisa?
Yes.
Could you repeat all that?
Hi, I'm Lisa. Thank you for, no. Several years ago, at a chamber luncheon, one of the then sitting commissioners made a public statement that the money was being set aside for a library construction project. I'm not talking like 50, 60 million dollars. I was thinking it was more like 5 or 10 million dollars was being set aside as the seed money for a library project.
It wasn't me.
No, sir.
It wasn't me.
No, sir.
But I don't, in any work sessions or anything, I don't remember any kind of conversation. We talked about different avenues, how we could try to approach something, but I don't think anything was ever set in stone, unfortunately. It would be something for this board to potentially talk about or try to figure something out. So, yeah, but in the, nothing was ever set.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know anything about any fund that was ever set aside or brought up or anything like that, since I've been on the commission and even before that, sitting in on the work sessions, I don't ever remember that being set aside like that. So, I'm not sure which previous commissioner said that. Don't even want to guess. But I don't know of anything.
Sure.
That's, any funding that's, that are set aside right now. And I know with our budget this year, there's, it's tight. It's very skinny. And...
And I do appreciate that. I do know that, that things are tight. And I do know that you have a lot on your plate. I just would hate to see us have an opportunity to apply for and perhaps receive a federal grant and not be prepared to be able to meet their timeline. And truly, the only way to meet their timeline would be to get started now. And to go ahead and start an RFQ and design process, because as your previous speaker just pointed out, it does take a little time. So, really, time is of the essence if we're going to pursue these federal funds and then in turn meet the deadlines that would come with that.
Lisa, I would have a question then. I'm going to refer to page 14 of your booklet. "Library Foundation has entered into an understanding with the City of Casper that should the county commit to funding a new facility, the foundation would be willing to enter into a land swap, trading our riverfront property for the former Source Gas County Health locations across some of the Thyrotops and State Building." Now, in looking at the federal grant that we are dealing with, with the Health Department, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, because that requires to have an address, of which you do or you don't have an address right now to put it at. So first of all, if you go ask for a $10 million grant, they're going to want an address where that's going to be. But we don't have an agreement as to whether you're staying where you're at, or you moving to the Source Gas Lot, what exactly is happening there. And then, to follow up on that, if you do get awarded that $10 million grant, they're not going to allow you just to spend up to 10 million and that's it. We're 100% going to have to commit to building that building out at that point in time.
Yes, sir. So to your first point about location, in submitting the application for the grant, I have had conversations with the team that put the grant together, and I did tell them that they're currently in negotiations about a switch in location, perhaps a land swap, for lack of a better way to put it, purchase, sell, sell, purchase. And that those discussions have been in earnest for quite some time, and it looks like may come to a conclusion in the very near future. But that being said, in my discussions with representatives at the state library, I indicated that I would plan to submit an application on the current piece of property that is owned by the Neutrona County Library Foundation, and then asked if situations change and locations change, does that impact the award? And they said, no, it does not. So, I'm submitting for the address that our foundation currently owns.
Commissioner Nick Leeson.
You know, we have some distinguished guests here today with us from across Market Street, and so I'll just ask, have you or will you be approaching the City of Casper for financial contribution to this effort?
I plan to approach anybody and everybody I can for financial contributions to this project, including the City of Casper.
You know, if the commissioners were being asked today, do we support the construction of a new library, I would think that there would be many, if not all of us, that would say, yes, aye. I think that if the question were, does the commission, you know, and I'm just speaking for myself, but it seems that the next ask might be, does the commission support the application of a grant request to the tune of $10 million of this 12.6? I would think that many of us, if not all of us, would say, yeah, go out and get it. But really, today, we're being asked, I think, the two things, which is, which are, we need 3.5, and we're being asked to commit to a total of 31. That's a tough ask right here today for me personally. I don't know if the other commissioners have comments, or if you have a comment. That's just another observation.
I do have a comment, but I know, I see Commissioner Chair Frill has a comment as well.
Go ahead.
So, to the point about funding, and you asked a moment ago, where would the funding come from? And no, I don't know. But I do know that with the recent passing of the state constitutional amendment, that you are in a unique position. I know you're waiting on the state legislature to make some decisions on what investment processes will look like for you, but you are in a position to be able to invest the funds that you currently hold and reap a greater reward and have a better return, effectively creating a revenue stream. And I would, I would propose tapping into that revenue stream.
I'm going to reserve my comments right now. Commissioner North? Right now, my concern is just the funding and just what's out there. I mean, we've committed to a very major project, and you all know that I have been through the library, and I spent a lot of time over there. And so, I'm not disagreeing that at some point we need a new facility. But unfortunately, the funding can only go so far. And I'm still trying to figure out where we're going to get the money to finish out the Health Department. And that's a, that's a huge chunk of change. So, I appreciate everything you guys have done, and I appreciate what you've done over at the library currently, and utilizing that facility to the best that you can, and utilizing every little space that you can. But right now, I personally just can't commit this commission or the county to that much funding right off the bat. If we had additional avenues of revenue that we could pursue, that we could bring that in, but like I said, right now, it's just been a perfect storm this year. I mean, it really has. We've never had a winter like we did last winter. The summer this year has washed out more roads and more culverts that aren't $50,000 projects. They're $500,000 to $750,000 projects that we've got to get taken care of, because that limits access. We've got other facilities that may require major overhaul immediately for the safety of the facility. And I'm not saying that the library doesn't have issues, so don't, don't...
Well, we're under an order to comply from the fire department, so there's that.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But I'm just saying, right now, the funding is, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out where we're going to get the funding for a lot of different areas. And so, I just can't, I can't see committing the commission to that much money at this point. And you guys all know that I support the library, so, and I support what it is, but it's just the timing right now is just not good, and we've got to figure out where we're going to come up with the money. And that's one thing I've told everybody that has asked, requested funding, is we've got to look for as many sources as we can out there right now. I mean, if we didn't have the ARPA funding last year, you know, to build the Health Department, we probably would have still been trying to figure out how we were going to pay for that. So, that took up the majority of that, that funding, so...
Well, this, this grant is ARPA funding as well, sir.
Commissioner Milne.
Lisa, I definitely as part of, you know, the community and you guys' efforts, it comes down to a little bit of practicality for me. One, we don't have a Health Department in place yet, so they're still where they're at. So that means we don't have an actual land swap yet, so we don't actually have ground to design on yet. We need to get one step in front of the other. I think I could support this a lot more if we actually had, if y'all had the ground, and we knew where we're going to build, we knew how the architect and the design and everything was going to play out. If we had all that, I think you'd see more support. Also, if, I think if you, if we went into, as a county, at the county and potentially the foundation, if we went in as a partnership, 500 from the county, 500 from the foundation or other business or entities out there, where we could split that design fee and come up with something, once we have the ground, I think we could start seeing movement. But with it currently, you know, we currently have this property, but we want this property, but we're not, there's, there's no ink, dry on paper or anything like that. It's really hard to get past that point.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on. I think Jones won't talk.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Milne, I appreciate the comments, and I think, and that's kind of the predicament that we're at right now, is trying to figure out which, which land can we go on? Obviously, the foundation does currently own some land. We've enjoyed a very positive relationship with the City of Casper over the past couple of years now, as we've looked at and have done some great work to get to a point where I think our, there's not much more we can do from the city side, and so we're here now talking to the commission, trying to figure out what it is that we can do to help solidify some land, because from that, without, without land, we can't begin the design process. We can't bring you, here's what this building is going to look like. We can't go to our supporters and say, this is, this is really happening. We have the support of the commission financially, that we're able to move forward with a design, and be able to go to our supporters and our donors and be able to raise the funds that you're talking about. I think the Library Foundation looks to receive some money from this potential land swap, which is one of the things that's interesting, interested, or interesting about this potential swap. And I think with that, we are prepared to be able to put some of those funds towards this project as a whole. So I think there is, there's that level of commitment as well. But we've looked and done our due diligence on both sites, and there's quite a bit of benefit to us moving. We were very gracious to receive the land that we did, how we did numerous years ago, but I think there's some unique development opportunities for that particular chunk of land. And there's also some cost savings for the library as a project to move and let private development take over the land where the foundation currently owns, in addition to the funds that we would potentially, potentially receive as the foundation, that we could put in towards the project. However, I would say that one of our biggest hangups is we don't want to just trade land for land and be talking about this same project 10 years from now as another chunk of empty land, right? So we want to be able to say, we're making, to our supporters, right, we're making this decision very strategically and very deliberately, because we know we're able to move forward. Otherwise, we can just sit on a chunk of land that we have right now for another 10 years and continue this discussion, which has been productive, but we haven't gotten anywhere in the last handful of years. So I think that's the impetus to looking to move, in addition now with the state office building being constructed, and with the investment the city's looking at on Midwest, there's been some infrastructure upgrades for that particular chunk of land that we're talking about. So there's some overall benefits to it, but what we're not interested in doing is swapping land to just sit on more land. So, thank you.
Mr. Griffin, then, in this land swap, you will be receiving funds back from the city if the swap, if the swap happens?
Yes, sir. That is our understanding. Yes, sir.
And not the asky a dollar amount, but I mean, is it under $1 million, over $1 million?
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd say it's under $1 million, but it's not insignificant either.
So if that land swap happened and you were, you did receive some funds in return, I don't know, I'm throwing this out to the commission, but obviously, if that took place, then you could move to a design phase to where you could at least get solid ballpark numbers of what this would cost by taking that next step, correct?
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I would disagree with that, because the funds that we're talking about, I don't think we want to commit the full amount of funds to that, because there's also some campaign, or capital campaign, that I think we need to get started to raise more money from our donors and things like that. And it's certainly not to the tune of the $3.5 million, and I don't think that there's a design firm that we could get hired to say, design us a building that's going to cost you $3.5 million, but we don't have that much money. We can't pay you that, but we can, we can pay you some. So I don't think we're going to be able to get to that point. And the challenge is, we've already gone out, the foundation, I believe it's 2019, and spent the tune of about $45,000 to do a needs assessment and understand, here's about the size that we're looking for, here's, here's some relative, kind of close renderings to what we're after. And that's about what, you know, that's about to the degree that we're going to get. Well, we're just talking square foot cost, right? We're not looking into, here's how much concrete is going to be in the building. That is going to take that full design. And it may very well come under the numbers that we're talking right now. Those are looking at national averages, and they're looking at regional averages. The numbers that we gave you have some contingency built into them to be, you know, because of our location, and also saying that this design process is probably going to take us roughly 18 months, ballpark, 16 to 18 months, to complete before we'd be ready for a bid, if you will, assuming that construction costs are not going to go down in the next 18 months, 16, 18 months. Those numbers have some padding built into them, but I think they're realistic. And for us to be able to get to a number, we can say, this is the size of the building that we know that we have to design, and this is how much that building's going to cost. We're going to have to spend a lot more than what the foundation will look to gain from our potential land swap with the city. our potential land swap with the city.
So I guess let me rephrase it. That $3 million that you're asking for, 3.5, is that, that's the higher on an architect throughout, from the beginning to the very end, correct?
Correct. Well, let me say, that's through the design process. I don't know if, it's a little bit on the high side from an overall averages standpoint, if you look at percentage from what we're looking at for the assumed building cost. I don't know how much of that would include what would be called construction administration throughout the course of the project, but that's going to be minor in comparison to the actual design work to do the plans.
Okay, so if you did the land swap and let's,
Yes, sir.
Let's say the funding itself, if this commission were to kick in 250,000, then I don't know if you'll get that much out of yours or not with the city. But what does a half a million dollars get you? And I'm not committing this commission to 250,000. It's for the sake of conversation. What would a half a million dollars do to move this project forward?
Respectfully, it wouldn't do that much, quite honestly. Because for us to be able to go through that full design process and for us to get any design team to be able to say, this is what it's going to cost for us to complete the full set of drawings, we have to be able to honor that agreement. And being able to start and stop is not going to be, one, I think, long-term cost-effective, and two, I just don't think we're going to get a response from anybody to say. I mean, realistically, that's asking somebody to give us a conceptual design, which we already have. So I don't think that's going to benefit us. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Does the school district, are they in a position to put any money in this library? I know when I was on the city council, they, we put a resolution together for school safety. We provided more officers and more police cars, and I know they donated, or they put money in on that. And I'm wondering if you have thought of them or if they're even able to do it legally as far as putting money into this.
So I don't know what they could do legally. But as Mr. Griffith pointed out, it's hard for me to go to the school district and say, hey, can you support our project when we don't have a project yet? So the point at which we would have discussions with potential investors in our project would be when we know that we're going to move forward. I think that's what makes the most sense, to be able to sit down with somebody and instead of saying, hey, we have an idea, will you throw money our way? But to be able to sit down and say, we have a project, we have some plans, we are an institution of informal education, and we support what you do, would you consider? That's a whole different conversation. So we're not at the point to be able to have that conversation at this point.
Well, I know it's, there's always timing to every conversation, but I hear the chairman talking about, well, what if the city did this, and what if we do this? What if the city put in a million, and we put in a million, and the school district put in a million? I mean, is that too far-fetched to go see if that can happen? Because if this library is going to be built, it's going to be built. And there are other powers at work here getting this library built. And a lot of it has to do with the attitudes of the people that are behind it and to be fearless and not be afraid of anything. And to do it because it's a righteous project. Because I do feel that way in my bones as a citizen who was born here a long time ago. And I think it is a righteous project. And once that, once that effect takes on your politicians and the citizens of this, that library will get built. So I don't know whether the school district will give you money. I don't know whether the city will give you money. I don't even know whether we'll give you money. I know we'd rather give you a million than three. And I don't want to go through all of the other projects we've got going on. I brought one up when we started the meeting, which is, which was, maybe we need to build a parking garage for the county courthouse, because we don't have places for our jurors to park. So we're, we're like everybody, we're trying to figure out how much we have for groceries, how much we have for utilities, how much do we have for rent, and we have to deal with all of that. So if there's sources of money out there that you haven't looked into, I would say I wouldn't be afraid to go do it. I had an old partner one time, he says, it sure don't hurt to show up and ask, and it doesn't cost you anything either. And he made some asks and got some things that have amazed me to this day. How did you do that? Well, I asked him. So that's all I can say about it.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's your committed or spent deadline for the ARPA funds?
December, hold on, I think it's in here. No, December 2026.
So I'm trying to work through this in my head. And, you know, I think even there, in other instances, I'm aware of conversations where maybe there's a hope that that's extended. Because, you know, people all over the country may have a hard time expending or having those funds fully committed by that date. We don't know if that's going to happen, and so I think that whatever the deadline is, you have to work back from that. So I'm not sure if the timing in my mind is making sense, if it's an 18-month process for design. Is that what I heard you say, John?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason. So I think from, and this is just ballpark, so I think from the time that we would be able to say, let's start the RFQ process until if this actually gets into a similar discussion you just had with Mr. Schenk a little bit ago, to where if you were to do a more traditional design bid build, it's going to take that long to get through the full design. And I could be a little wrong on that. It could be 16, it could be 14 months. But it's not, I guess my point to that comment, Peter, is that it is not going to happen in six months. You know, there is a lot of time that's going to go into designing a building this big. And if you looked at the concept, you know, delivery methods for the construction side of it, there's avenues to allow you to start the construction sooner and still look at hitting that tail end of 2026 date.
And then the entire project would not have to be completed by that point, but the part of the project that the capital funds from the grant, you'd have to have a portion of the, like an equivalent of a $10 million portion of the project. That could be substantial completion, is the terminology that you used. And when I asked, what do they mean by substantial completion, is that it's available for use. It doesn't necessarily have to be open to the public at that time, but it's available for use.
So.
Perhaps even just by us.
Yeah, you may have some challenges with regard to expenditure, commitment of those federal funds, but let's, again, kind of come back to why you're here today. I would like to know, you know, you've asked for 3.5, you've told us there's, you know, that there's maybe, that's maybe a high number. What is the absolute minimum in terms of dollars that you need from the commission today that will allow you to move forward with the federal fund application?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, to move forward with just the application? Now, that much, I don't know. I don't know if you know that.
So to move forward with the application, we can move forward with the application. The problem with doing that without any funding committed to the RFQ and design process is that we already know that we are proposing a very aggressively tight timeline, right? I mean, that's kind of what you were pointing out, I think, Commissioner Nicolason, is like when you said, I can't put all this together, right? It's a super tight timeline. And part of why we think we can meet that is, we know that the land doesn't need, there's not a ton of site preparation work to be done. I mean, there, obviously, there's going to be sun, but not a ton. And there's already some infrastructure in place nearby that really helps us move forward with our project, maybe a lot faster than if you were just on a totally raw piece of land. That being said, I can do an application, but if we wait until the award, which this will be awarded in December, then we've already burned several months of the RFQ process where we could be getting the ball rolling. And those months are precious because as it is, we're going to be, by the skin of our teeth, getting this done in time. We'll probably be leaning heavily into that substantial completion of a portion that is available for use by the deadline. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome.
Commissioner Mill.
Lisa, maybe this is asked and answered already, but the grant, it's for $10 million?
The amount available is $12.6 million. I'll be applying for a full 12.6.
Is that for the federal, for the statewide, for all libraries, or?
Yes. And it's a competitive grant process.
Okay, so you may not end up with the...
There's no way to know, right? I've been given reasonable assurances, which really means absolutely nothing. Just basically reasonable assurances that your project seems to muster the requirements. That's really all they can tell you.
Right.
And it does. And a reasonable assurance that in all likelihood, our project will be larger than any other project that's submitted. And so if, in fact, the state is looking for a showcase project, there's, I mean, in my mind, nobody's telling me this, but I would think this is a great opportunity for the state to be able to point at one project and say, this is what we did with those funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we don't have any other questions.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Thanks, John.
Okay, Troy Hunsaker, we have gotten way behind on time, so.
Hey, afternoon.
All right, since we're running behind, I'll try to keep it short and to the point. I've provided you guys, I think through Michelle, she emailed you guys an economic update. And then you guys should have also received, I believe Nick might have printed them out, some, a sample bond ladder. So what I'd like to do is just give you a quick rundown on kind of where we are economically. We've talked about this several times throughout the year. On that PowerPoint presentation, the real highlight is going to be on page four, the Federal Reserve interest rates. And as we discussed earlier this year, we felt that by the third or fourth quarter of this year, we'd probably be nearing the point where the Federal Reserve has done raising rates, and it seems like we are right there. They are meeting tomorrow, today and tomorrow. The market is anticipating no rate hike tomorrow. There's potentially one more rate hike by the end of the year. And then, as you can see, they're going into the second half of 2024. Right now, the markets are expecting interest rates to actually decline. So what that presents for us in our conversation that we've kind of had ongoing throughout the year is, what do you do with that portion of money that's been in discussion? So as you are aware, you have long-term investments with us, and then you also have some money in our local government investment pool, Wyoming Class. So Wyoming Class, again, is a pool that offers daily liquidity. It is the highest yielding AAA pool in the state. It is paying about 5.36% right now. So that is one option that we've discussed. You do have about $35 million in that pool right now. And then Nick also provided you guys with this sample bond ladder, and I know we've shared these with you guys in the past as well. This would be a good time to talk about potentially locking in some of those funds into something like a ladder scenario. So what I'm offering you guys here is just kind of two ideas. One, you know, keeping money liquid where it's accessible, or because we believe that we're near the top of the interest rate environment, would be a good time to maybe consider locking in funds in something like a bond ladder, like what we presented here. The sample we went with, obviously, these numbers, we can change and customize to meet your needs if this is an avenue you want to pursue. But in this scenario, we were suggesting, we're basing on $90 million, taking 75 million of it, investing that long-term. So you'd be locking in those yields. Doing so would generate the county about $4.2 million in additional income on an annual basis. And then you could place the extra 15 million, obviously, into Wyoming Class. Again, these numbers could change. You know, whatever direction you guys want ahead, we're certainly happy to accommodate. And I can add, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have in terms of the economy or investments or anything else.
Commissioner Mill.
Thank you for coming today, Troy. On the bond ladder, those bonds, who manages and who owns those bonds, and how do we get them? How much does it cost us to purchase those bonds?
Yes, good question, Commissioner Mill. So this is a very similar setup to what the county already has with us. So we effectively have a bond ladder just with a smaller amount of funds, roughly five and a half or $6 million. So you guys would own these bonds, the county would own these bonds specifically, and then we would work with Nick and Tom, obviously, on placing these investments. So we would manage them, but we do not charge you any fees. What you see here is net to you. So we get this question sometimes, how do we get paid? And I've shared with you guys in the past, but I'll go over this again. So there's two ways that people in my business get paid. We can get paid as an investment advisor, where we charge an annual fee based on the assets under management. So typical fees will be anywhere from seven to 10 basis points. So that's on a $90 million portfolio, you'd probably be paying, you know, close to $90,000 a year in fees. The other way that people get paid is as a broker dealer, and that's primarily what we do. We are licensed to do both. We get paid as a broker dealer. So when these bonds come out as a new issue, they're issued by underwriters, Goldman Sachs, Wells Fargo, you know, First Tennessee, these various investment firms, they underwrite, and then they pay us a commission. By law, they have to pay all the brokers the same exact commission. So what that does is that avoids any conflict of interest. We do not mark up the bonds, but everything you see is net to you. So in this scenario, it would cost the county absolutely nothing to invest. Thank you. You bet.
Commissioner North.
Troy, I appreciate you coming in today. I guess my question is, my biggest question is, on the interest that is collected on these bonds, is it available on a yearly basis, or, you know what I mean?
Yes, yes, sure.
There's different types of interests, there's different types of availability of that funds. And I'm not talking about the principal, but the interest itself, if that is available to us as we move forward, so we can budget that.
Yep. Yeah, good question also. Yeah, so you can budget on that. These types of bonds pay twice a year, so every six months, you'll see there's an issue date and a maturity date on that sample ladder. Your first bond payment typically comes on six-month anniversary, and that would be your first interest payment for the year, and then on the 12-month anniversary subsequent to that. So you can actually, to go through the budget process, create cash flows based on those, you know, on the income coming in. You bet.
Question.
Commissioner Lerd.
Are you talking about treasury bonds?
These would be a combination of treasuries or agency bonds. They are all legal investments under Wyoming statute 9-4-831.
And why wouldn't we just do treasury bonds, which seem to be pretty well locked in, there's no cost to us?
You can certainly do that. So treasury bonds, because they have the backing, the full faith and credit of the federal government, they are deemed less risky than agency bonds, so they have a lower yield. Both treasury bonds and agency bonds are basically in the same paragraph in terms of Wyoming statute. So it is typical to do an agency bond because you're going to pick up extra yield because they are deemed by definition riskier, though they still have the backing of the federal government. If that, if the county would desire to do treasuries for, you know, more safety or whatever, that's certainly something that we could do as well.
What's the percentage on that now, right now?
Well, in the ladder here, you can see, we're north of 5% right now. Yeah.
So the thing that I'm worried and nervous about is, you know, the county lost three and a half million, they said four million, I guess it's less than that now, on an investment they made with YO Star Two.
Yes, that's correct.
And, but I see it as really, they lost a lot more because they didn't make any money on that money for two years it was there. So if you were, you know, if you were just going to make 4%, it sounds like we maybe lost maybe six to eight or nine million dollars on that. And I just can't get to the bottom. And I just can't get to the bottom of that, as to what happened there, other than that I understand that the money was managed by a stock company. But I, and I wasn't on the board at the time, I don't know what was said to the two guys that are here as to why that was a good investment. So I'm really shy, and I really want to vote where I think that our money is safe and secure, and we're getting a reasonable rate of interest that's solidly, is going to be there for us. But when you say something's a little more risky, doesn't have US government behind it, that bothers me personally a little bit, because I'm, you know, I'm a guy that, I had to, I was raised by a grandfather who lost everything in 1929. And he had certain beliefs about what you should do with your money. And some were right, and some weren't probably prudent. But when you're dealing with public money like we are, I want to get it as bulletproof as we can, and make money on it, and have it liquid. That's my thought. So could you reflect on that?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, Commissioner Laird, you touched on a couple of points there. So just, I would like to clarify, agency bonds would be like Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal Home Loan, Farmer Mac. They do have the backing of the federal government. They were created by acts of Congress, so they are considered government-sponsored enterprises. They don't have what's called the full faith and credit of the federal government like a US Treasury does. So that's the difference in risk, but they, both types of bonds have the backing of the federal government. When, in 2008, when the financial crisis happened, Fannie and Freddie obviously were in some trouble. And the system worked as designed. So Fannie and Freddie were put into conservatorship by the federal government, and they kept solvent. So all of our local governments, anyone that owned Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac bonds, not a single penny was ever lost. So the system worked as designed. So they are backed, just through the nuances of investment definitions, they have a different type of risk.
Do you know why we lost money?
So I will speak to that carefully. So YO Star 1 and 2 is run by the State Treasurer's Office. They have a contract with JP Morgan. JP Morgan, as I understand from officials within the Treasurer's Office, is the custodian on all the state's assets, roughly $27 billion. Not entirely sure of who makes the investment decisions, whether it's the State Treasurer's Office internally or whether it's JP Morgan. Effectively, what the Treasurer's Office did in terms of YO Star 1 and 2, and this is where it's different from Wyoming Class, through COVID and through the 0% interest rate environment that we experienced the last few years, they bought long-term bonds out two, three, four, five years. And so what happened is, as interest rates have gone up in the last year and a half, at a pace that we haven't seen in over 40 years, they were locked into effectively these lower yielding bonds. And the interest that they were paying was not as great as what you could get like in Wyoming Class or Wyoming Government Investment Fund. And I knew you guys have spoke with Joan Evans as well. So they're two very similar things. So what's happened is, our yield has gone up significantly, as has the yields with Wyoming Government Investment Fund. YO Star 1 and 2 stayed fairly stagnant. And so there was an outflow of a significant amount of money over the last eight to 10 months out of both funds. And so they were put in a position where they're having to sell investments inside it at a loss. Neither of those funds are AAA rated. Wyoming Class and Wyoming Government Investment Fund, they're both AAA rated. In terms of my investment team, we have over 80 investment professionals. And we have 14 other sister local government investment pools throughout the country. $80 billion in assets under management, and over 6,700 local governments as participants. So if it's something liquid, something that you want accessible, then I would not encourage you to do a bond ladder, because you are locking in. But if you want to do locking your yields, something like a bond ladder, they could be treasuries or agencies. But if you want liquid, then something like a Wyoming Class is the place to go. We are AAA rated, Standard and Poor's, and the SEC, they monitor us. And we have to follow a very, very narrow set of regulations that allows us to maintain that AAA rating. We are overseen by Board of Trustees here in the state, of which there are government officials as part of our board. Commissioner Navatny from Johnson County is the chairman of our board. And our legal counsel is Pat Crank, the former Attorney General of the state. So they oversee all of the operations, you know, not the day-to-day, but they make sure that we are staying within the guidelines. And that's what allows us to maintain that daily liquidity, as well as the safety. All those assets that have, that are being managed by my team, they've done it for over 30 years, and not a single penny there has ever been lost either.
Commissioner Mill.
Yeah, just kind of comment to Commissioner Laird's question. So you're asking about, like, the surety or the treasury? They're backed by the US government, right? Bar none. YO Star 1 and 2, it's invest at your own risk. The state of Wyoming will not back any investments behind that. So our situation was a little different than other people that are pulling out of YO Star 2. As people pulled out of YO Star 2, we became a majority holder. You don't want to be that, because you're going to be the last person holding the bag, and the bag may be empty. Just put it over your head at that point. So we, that was one of the reasons. And with that, us pulling that money, they didn't have funds. Everything, they had to sell short those long-term investments that Troy's talking about. That's where they lost our money.
Yes, I'm aware that they lost.
They lost it.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, and that's because they, the state of Wyoming, does not guarantee those funds. We had to pull out as, like we did, because we were the majority holder. So it's not that we were chasing rates. We were being financially responsible, regardless of what the treasurer says. We were being financially responsible with our money.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Troy, thanks for coming today, I appreciate it. Appreciate the information, appreciate the market update. I didn't study it as closely as I probably should have, but I did look at it. My review of this one pager is a kind of a pro forma investment of $75 million. And I think that, you know, while it would lock in those funds, because of the very nature of the ladder, we would have available, with the maturity, as soon as, in this case, September 26, 2024, $15 million. So at that time, it's my understanding, you could choose to invest it wisely or spend it foolishly, right? I mean, that's kind of the whole purpose of the ladder.
That's correct, yes.
So, so it's not like we're locking all of it in until 2028, which is kind of the five-year, I guess, extent of the ladder. What I, I like this concept. I'd like to hear at some point from our own treasurer or from Nick, maybe not today, but, you know, kind of their thoughts on this. I'm still not convinced, but have some, you know, I guess in the back of my mind, I don't want to make another mistake. And so getting some additional feedback from experts in the field may make sense, whether that's an investment committee that the county, maybe we have a couple commissioners sitting on that with the treasurer, or someone from his office, and maybe a couple outside people with no skin in the game. And so maybe that's something that we do. Maybe this is part of our, or the beginning of an RFP that we send out to qualified investment groups like Peaks, and let people come back to us with their thoughts or proposals. I think that we're going to need to act quickly, but I don't think we can make a decision today to invest 75 million with your firm. Now, I know that's not what you're asking for today, but I think we need to do a little more due diligence. And then hopefully, we can act in the next 30 or 45 days.
I had one last, maybe question, comment.
Commissioner Laird.
For the commissioners. I, there's something tells me, I don't, I don't like the idea of binding future commissions with this. So, so my term would be up 2026, three of us would be up in 2026. And so all I'm saying is, is that I'd like to think about, do we really want to do that? Binding future commissions on this kind of money, in spite of what's happened in the past? Because I'll have to admit, I'm not an expert at this. And so I'm just throwing out things that kind of come across my mind, that I think are important on this money, because we're really kind of behind the eight ball on that money right now.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, to Commissioner Laird and his observation, and maybe I'll ask for Troy, your confirmation. This, we could still get the money out of even the 2028 bond. It'd just be, there'd be a significant penalty, is my understanding. Is that right, or is it truly locked in, and we can't touch it?
Yeah, okay, so a couple of good points there as well. In terms of accessing the money, so government, the Government Finance Officers Association is kind of the gold standard for local governments investing money. And they put forth a best practices, where safety, liquidity, and yield are the three most important priorities in that order. So safety is the number one priority. So safety is really addressed, because one, this is permissible via Wyoming statute, as it is in effectively every state in the country. Liquidity is the next discussion before we even look at yield, right? So to your question, you can sell any one of these bonds at any given time, yes. And so there can be some change in the market price, which is basically what happened to YO Star 2. So in the event, and we've seen it happen, it's happened here in the state, something happens in the county. Lincoln County went through this several years ago. The bridge that goes from the highway to the coal mine had to be replaced. And so there was a debate whether the state was going to pay for it, the coal mine, or, you know, the county. And so there was enough time that, as they had, they worked with us, and as those investments were coming mature, they did not reinvest those funds, and they let it sit in cash until they determined how that was going to be paid for. Sometimes a disaster happens, you know, a bridge washes out inland or whatever, you know, flooding, and they need access to cash. You can sell these bonds any day. So there is no penalty, there might be a change in market price.
So, and so I think what we're, what we're not doing is binding future commissions. What we're saying is, if this is locked in and carried forward, then we're going to get on this 10 million that goes out to 2028, $600,000 a year, at, let's see, 6%. And if we don't like that, we can, you know, sell it and move on.
Correct.
If we think there's a better use of that money, and then we suffer the consequences like what we did with YO Star 2.
Yes, that's correct. So just to kind of dovetail with both of the comments and questions here. So we work with all 23 counties in the state of Wyoming. We are the only investment firm that actually has that, and I'm proud to say that. YO Star doesn't have all 23 counties, no one else does. So, and then in total, we work with almost 200 local governments managing investments. And I've been doing this personally for 16 years. So the concept of the bond ladder is, we stagger those maturities, much like you spoke about. And then if you need money in the future, you know, if that bond matures, then you can use the cash. Or you can take that money and leapfrog it out, and buy something longer term again to take advantage of the highest interest rates possible. We've been doing that on a smaller scale with Nitrona County since 2007. So I've worked with Tom Doyle since 2007, and Nick, since he's been around as well. So, and then to follow up with what Commissioner Laird was saying, binding future, you know, future commissioners or future governments to this, this is a standard practice, much like you would create a budget, regardless of what's going to be happening next year. You're building projects or whatever else, right? This is the same concept. But if new commissioners come in, they do know what the cash flow is and what the income is. So we, like I said, we do this for close to 200 local governments in all 23 here in the state.
Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Mill. This was an update, this was not.
But we got Nick right there. He could maybe give us a real quick update of that RFP, just kind of where you're at with it, and your thoughts of what you're going to do.
I have been looking for example, for a sample, Tony Taylor. And I've had no luck, you told me to talk to Heather about a sample of RFP for investment in my reserves.
All right, and maybe include that ladder, what people could do for us with them, with each, as a ladder system as well? Or what their suggestion was? What their suggest, each RFP or participant would give us their idea of what to do with the ladder if we so choose.
Oh, I would do that.
Yeah.
Just different structures, or see how they would.
So if you can help them out with.
We have the City of Caspers RFP, or RFQ, I can't remember.
It was an RFP.
We have theirs, and although this is different in a number of respects, it could be a place for legal and the Treasurer's Office to, yeah.
So with that being said, looking at page four, like you pointed out here, with the probability, we're approaching a point where we're going to start seeing diminished returns. I think we need to, you know, we've got a set time limit with First Interstate, with those monies that are there. Things are going to start slowing down. We need to figure out what we're doing here relatively quickly. Thank you, Nick. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, you know, that's the way I roll.
Chairman Phil. Yeah. If I may, in terms of the RFP, and I want to say this, I'm not trying to sell any of you on one direction or another, but I've been doing this long enough, they know the process. So one, if you guys would like some samples of RFPs, I can provide them to you. I have the City of Caspers, we responded, we didn't get it, First Interstate Bank did get it. If you go through the RFP process, you're going to get responses that are probably going to be 100 to 150, 200 pages long from several different investment advisory firms. The types of, the types of firms that are going to respond are going to be investment advisor types that are going to charge you fees. If you guys want me to charge a fee, we can do that. We're licensed to be an investment advisor and a broker. Based on my experience, I don't think that's necessary. I will use Laramo County, Colorado, as an example, they're a client of ours. They have about $175 million that we manage. And for years, they had an investment advisor, and they paid them roughly $200,000 a year. Deputy Treasurer was hired, she came over from another county when she lost the election in Adams County. And she taught them some things that says, look, we can run this portfolio on our own and save this money. So after several years of doing that, they terminated their relationship with the investment advisor, saved the county close to $200,000. And their investment portfolio, honestly, and I could, sure, I can send you guys copies of it, is $175 million, they probably have 20 positions total. In fact, we just did a trade for them this morning of $10 million, didn't cost the county anything. So when I share that, and I certainly understand the need to, you know, maybe have an investment committee or whatever. But if you go into that RFP process and seek an investment advisor, it's, I don't want to say you're not making a mountain out of a molehill, but we're making it a little more complicated than it has to be, quite honestly.
Troy, if I can respond to that, though, I've also, we've had five other individuals come in here wanting to take the money that the county has and invest it in the way that they, that they see fit. And so going the RFP route, I'm certainly hoping that we can rely on the Treasurer's Office to weed through what is good and what is bad. But it's the only fair way of doing it.
Sure.
It's just like, in my own personal opinion, I brought this up today, I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you're giving us an update. But I think when we kick the door open to allow you to come. allow you to come in and, and tell us how we should invite, or invest our money, then I should allow every other person that's come in here before to come do the same thing.
I can't argue with that.
So, I think the RFP process is the way we need to go, in my opinion. The city has, if they do in fact have a copy, then we need to get that to legal and figure that out and get the ball rolling on it. That's, that's where I thought we were headed with this, but, and I, and don't take that as me saying anything negative towards you, but if we deviate and take information from you, create an RFP, then are we really being fair to every other person who walks through that door?
Sure.
So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Mr. Chairman, one, one question is, if we did an RFP for investment advisor who would charge us a fee, would they, or would they not be a fiduciary to the county commissioners, their client, or the county?
Yeah, so that's, that, the word fiduciary does come up quite a bit because investment advisors like to use that, that's fine. Really, the, kind of how that transpired is as a result of the two thousand and eight crisis, the SEC, well, and it used to be the NASD, now it's FINRA, right? They came up with language where investment advisors have to be a fiduciary. The investment advisor lobby effectively went to the federal agencies and said, you know, this is our position, and we fiduciary. So, they would be a fiduciary, and they would charge a fee, and certainly, if you guys do an RFP, we would respond as well, we're happy to do that. And like, like I said, I could provide you guys copies of past RFPs, I have the city of Caspers available, I can email it to you.
Yeah, I, I emailed it to everybody on this commission, and legal, and I believe Nick, but it's been a few minutes, I think it was June. So, so maybe if a fiduciary relationship is established, maybe it's worth some money, I don't know if it's worth a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars, but the, the other question is, well, why not do an RFP that's just for a brokerage firm? Or for investment of up to, you know, fifty million dollars or seventy-five million dollars, and then let people say, well, here's a bond ladder, and let other people say, well, here, go invest in my little startup company. I mean, across the board, and then we'll have specific proposals from people, and, and so, it might streamline a little bit, and if we're not asking for an investment advisor, we're telling them that we're not looking for, you know, that kind of relationship, we're looking for these kinds of, for investment of these kinds of monies.
Yeah, so, in terms of Natrona County, we are not the only broker dealer that works with the county. Tom's had a relationship with RBC here in town for quite some time. Blaine is the, the broker on that, it used, he took it over from another guy. So, you know, Nick can call us up and say, hey, I'm looking to place a million dollars or five million or whatever, and solicit bids, that's a common practice in terms of like a broker dealer relationship as well. That keeps everybody honest, right? Laramo County does that quite a bit. We're not the only ones that work, but we typically get the business because we know we're competitive and we offer them the best yields. So, there are a couple of different avenues you could go, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, that was an excellent question asked by Mr. Nicolason, and I.
I was thinking of how to phrase it, and he did a beautiful job. Now, what I'd like to, how I would phrase it is, I think, it's my own personal feeling, I think we need to pay for expert advice to tell us what to do with the money. It's as simple as that.
Sure.
I'm a guy, my whole career, fifty-seven years, I've hired a lot of experts to give me advice in all kinds of areas, money, stock brokerage, rigs that blow up, tanks that blow up, airplanes that blow up, what caused this, I don't know, but there are guys that do know, or women that do know. And so, I, I would hope that this commission entertains, hiring our own expert, getting our expert's advice, and he's our fiduciary, and we pay him. I'll feel very comfortable then, when I go to sleep at night, that I took somebody's advice other than my own, or some guys that really only dabble in this, because I don't know that there's an expert on the commission, maybe Mr. Nicolason more so than most people, but I would really want to hear somebody that's doing it for a living. That's my feeling.
Yeah, certainly warranted, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, thank you very much, appreciate it, commissioners. You bet, I will see you next week, here.
Here.
Well, Ramco. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Danielle. You got an armed guard escort now?
Yeah, I had the clerk of district court with me as well, but she had a prior engagement, so she had to leave, but I do have her numbers and her stats. All right, so the parking study that we have been working on, I know you're behind time, and you had quite a big packet with my notes in front, so the notes are synopsis of all of the pictures and the depiction of the parking scenarios in the back. I just wanted to say first off that Ann and I have put in quite a bit of time with this parking study. Lucas Patton in GIS, he was the one who put together the maps, he did a great job helping us out with that. I also met with department heads, elected officials, Jill and Sergeant Hoffman, and Tom Poplick and myself, we've had several conversations regarding parking, and so I'll just give you a quick rundown. So, why did we do the parking study? Well, we're seeing more and more requests for parking spaces, for employees requesting closer parking spaces, who either have a disability, they've got a temporary ailment, or they've got a long-term illness or diagnosis that they're dealing with, and so, they're requesting closer parking spaces. There's no secret, we've got an aging workforce. Every January, the commission gets to see the years of service that's put out, and we've got quite a few employees that are getting up there in age, and it's harder for them to walk further distances, especially in the winter. We have employees right now, and I know of two for sure, that are seeking handicap parking permits through their physicians due to whatever they have going on, whether it be temporary or permanent. We have three handicap public parking spots right now in this southeast parking lot. One of the handicapped spot, it is posted as an employee handicap parking spot. We've had that parking spot for clerk, do you know how long? It's probably been five, ten years, five years? Yeah, so she's one of the long-term employees that we knew that would need a handicap parking spot from eight to five, so we went ahead and just posted one there. I will say, we have another employee in this building who has a handicap parking permit. She tries to use one of the public parking spaces. If there is not a public parking space available, she will utilize one of the handicap parking spots, which legally, she's allowed to do. But then, that takes away from the public another handicap spot, and there's only one left. We receive complaints from the public that there are no parking spaces available. Typically, I get these calls, I know maintenance received the calls before, this happens when jury trials are going on, and we'll get into that in a little bit. We also have issues with employees who park in public parking instead of the assigned parking lots. This tends to happen when we have weather. It'll also happen, and rightfully so, when we have employees who need to be here late at night or early in the morning. Our designated employee parking lot is not well-lit. I will say that the maintenance director, Tom, they're here at three AM, four AM in the morning, clearing the parking lots. There's not usually a worry about the snow, the worry is, they are dark, they're not well-lit, and it's not fun walking across the street from those dark parking lots. Real quick, we'll get into the jury trials and selections and high-profile court cases. This is what the clerk gave me, she said, between circuit court and district court, there are three hundred hearings per month. Of those three hundred hearings, on top of that, there's jury trials. Those jury trials last an average of four days. Now, with these jury trials, you have jury selections, and each selection, each jury selection has over sixty people. We did have a time where two jury selections were going on at once, so that was an extra hundred and twenty people that were trying to find parking down here. I will let Sergeant Hoffman speak to this, but we do have sixty-six employees total that are in the building, that are building-wide, and seven to ten thousand people per month walk through the doors. Do you want to explain a little more about that?
Well, our highest was, our highest month was ten thousand one hundred and forty-five. Yeah, squint over here. Our highest month was ten thousand one hundred and forty-five, our lowest was five thousand fifty-eight. So, you can kind of discern your own average between those two numbers, probably close to somewhere between seven thousand people come through the Townsend Justice Center. Just on our walk over here, we have a jury trial going on right now, I snapped a photo, I'm well, love to share it with you. We have two people, handicap placards on them, they're just parked out in the lot because there's not any parking places for them. Did Jill send that to you? This is the one.
She did, but she just, she just.
Oh, okay, okay, just by phone.
Because you only have two handicap parking spots.
Yeah, there's two handicap spots there, the whole front row, ideally, closest to the Townsend should be all handicap with signage up there. Right now, one of the signs is down, it came down last winter, it just hasn't been put back up yet, so I'm sure there's some concrete drilling and whatnot that has to happen, so that's a whole process, and winter's coming again. The thing with the jurors, when they get there, they think they're going to get there early because they know that parking is a problem, they think the area that says reserved is for them, and then we spend a good portion of our morning having to go out, and I play parking lot attendant, and telling people that they can't park there, and then they're worried about getting a ticket, and they say it's only two-hour parking, so that's a whole nother issue, is I don't know what that would take to get signage changed or removed, or moved to like, no overnight parking, so that they're not worried about something like that. Oh, recently, we had jurors parking in the slumberland parking lot. He was not happy, and that was when I was out playing parking lot attendant, and his comment to me was, where do people performing their civic duty, where are we supposed to park? I just, I didn't really say anything back to him, I kind of just agreed, and I said, it's something that we're working on, so hopefully that can be taken care of. There's more and more trials, more things that I see since I've been there, and I've only been over there for the last four years. I have employees who are paying for parking every month to about four hundred and twenty dollars a year because there's no place for them to park, so they're paying, Williams Porter or the Masonic Temple has some spots, so they're paying to park over there because they don't have an assigned place. And even those that do have assigned places, they'll show up in the Hotel Virginia as people are guests staying overnight, and they say, well, we didn't know, we're not supposed to park there because it's just numbered, it doesn't say reserved, or county employees only, or something like that, or there's no hours posted on there. So, then they go park somewhere else, and then somebody parks somewhere else, it's just a leapfrog, that's what we've been dealing with.
So, I think, Chairman, with that, Oil City News has now moved into that building as well, where Hotel Virginia is, and while we are doing our sweeps of the parking lot and seeing who's parked where, Oil City News, I did talk to the owner, and he has requested, if he could, to get at least two parking spots for his business, to see if they could designate two parking spots to himself for them. I can say right now, it was a great example, because they've been doing all of these awards for our community, excellent, but these people will pull in, not knowing where to park, don't know where to park, and they end up taking the spots where our county vehicles go, our inspectors come back in, our planning people come back in, people come back in, and we don't have anywhere to park. So, I think the first place to start with this is, we really need to get better signage. Our signage is not up to date, people do not pay attention to it, we've got signs that are small, can we pull up? Do, just, go ahead and pull up that one. Here's an example of a sign, no parking beyond this point, and then you can see the little markers right in front of the truck, there's a little marker that says forty-four, not all of those markers are on every spot, so if there's a spot that doesn't have a marker, people will pull in there because the marker's just missing, when technically, that is an assigned spot for somebody. Pull up another one. Let me see, do, parking, yep, try that one. So, this one right here, we actually, you can see the sign right here, it says parking for Natrona County employees only, this white GMC, now click out of that one, and pull up the motorcycle, it says motorcycle, a sign missing. So, we had this motorcycle here that had California plates, it had been in our parking lot for over two weeks, it was taking up one of the building inspector's vehicle spots. The problem with this was that you can see next to it, it says reserved, building department sixteen, this spot doesn't, is not marked, and then the one on the other side is not marked as well, so we're missing signage. When we called over to the deputies and said, can we tag this, can we get it towed, can we get it moved, he said, well, I don't want to move it, I don't want to tag it because the signage isn't appropriate. He goes, there needs to be a better sign here, telling him that he can't park here. The deputy, however, was very proactive, he ended up getting the phone number, he ran the plates, got the phone number, was able to get ahold of the gentleman, the gentleman came out, moved the motorcycle. The bad side is, he moved it to another spot that he wasn't supposed to move it to because we weren't out there. So. It, another spot where there was no signage. So, I think the first place to start with all of this, on the employee side, is signage, better signage. So that we can have the spots that are already assigned to us, get those set in place, so people will stop parking there and then go from there. I think county vehicles need to come first, there has to be a spot for county vehicles, they shouldn't be parked on the street overnight, they need to be in an assigned parking spot. Then the Townsend Justice Center, the closest parking lot to them, would be helpful for their employees, and then the rest of the employees.
Mr. Chairman, how many, how many county spots do we have?
Oh, well, there's eighty-seven in this lot. Sixty in that lot. So, there's a hundred and forty. Ten, we probably got around a hundred and seventy, I haven't counted them out.
How many county employees we have?
Well, we have got, in this building, I don't know how many in this building, do you have them broke out by just this building? The Townsend Justice is sixty-six. Between this building and the Hall of Justice, I do not know. I would have to take it out, take out road and bridge, parks.
Not enough spots.
And Commissioner Laird, if you look through the.
I knew that, I did know that.
If you look through the packet as well, Commissioner Laird, it shows the different agreements we have with other entities that are using, so the district attorney's office, the public defender's office, municipal court, they currently don't have any assigned spots, and they requested back in two thousand and twelve, they requested three, one for the clerk and two for the judges. They were not granted those spots by the commission at that time. I am told, though, now by the current clerk, that she arrives early, sometimes stays late, and that the judges are parking in the assigned parking lot off of B Street, and they have tight schedules sometimes, and that the judges are over parking. So, they don't have any assigned spots, but I have included the agreements in here in the synopsis of who, who does have assigned spots and who doesn't.
Commissioner Mill.
So, short-term solution, signage, let's get that done first, right?
Can we get a price on that?
Yeah.
It'd have to be almost for each spot, because like she was just showing up there in, in the photos, and the same thing over at the Townsend, you got. in, in the photos and the same thing over at the Townsend, you got one that's parked, that's marked in the middle and it's, there's arrows, but it's, you know, seven, eight feet high.
What about entrances?
Yeah, so it'd have to be each one and, and marked for, for our example, like TJC staff only or Townsend staff only or for the county parking lot, county employees only.
As, as building, whatever you are, what's your thoughts?
That's why I brought him.
You don't have enough space, number one. You really don't have enough space, the design of the building, to the parking lot layout. The city does mandate that we have islands with foliage of some kind, which takes up some spots like Townsend.
Yeah.
A quick fix, I mean, we can paint the lines over here at the Hall of Justice. I mean, if you're going to do signage, I can paint county lines white, give the Virginian yellow or however we want to do it. We can tag it that way. Might be a little more visible if they can park here, they know they're not parking here. And then with the signs at the beginning, you know, when you pull in, we do have a big sign across Laurel Gardens, we have a big sign. But then again, over there, you're getting a little everything. You hit the city, you can stay, you got county, you got judges. I mean, everybody in their neighborhood is in there and they all hate it because they have the law. But if you add parking elsewhere, it's just, most people don't want to go elsewhere. They want to be as close to their building as they can. But a short-term fix at Hall of Justice, simple paint, we can repaint it. You know, if we want to color code it, okay, Virginia, this is you, stay there. Everybody else gets here, but then you're going to have to fight tooth and nail with all these people that are parked everywhere. There's, there's nobody that really stays in there all these spots.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Signs can, I think, get a little expensive. Sounds like a lot of signs. I don't know what can be done locally, in-house, you know, by somebody in China. I don't know. You know, you see a lot of just reserved paint on parking spaces. You know, the, the thing about color coding is, you know, that, that might be pretty high level for some people. And then you have to have a sign that says what the heck the color coding means or a memo to all people. If it just said reserved, that might be, you know, and you paint it right there on each space, it might be a little quicker and a little cheaper. Then you have to kind of follow up with people and say, well, by reserved, and maybe a number them too. I don't know. It sounds like a lot of paint each year. It's, it's a problem.
The thing with the reserved is, like I was just saying, for the jurors that are coming in, they think because they've been selected for jury duty that the reserved is for them. So they park there where it's actually reserved is for the employees, the judges, law clerks that are there. So then I, I get called out to play parking lot attendant and I'm watching video and figuring out who parked where. And then I got to go find them in the building and ask them to move because we had a judge that had to park down at, you know, Gale Gardens or something, so.
They don't like that?
They don't like, yeah, they don't like that.
Mr. Chairman, may be time to look into a parking garage, but I know the city's gone through this. I've seen the cities, I don't know how many different parking studies they do for 80,000 apiece and they're always pretty much the same. But what the people tell me downtown is, that have businesses, there's no place for their customers to park because who's parking in front of their building? There's employees that are working downtown. So it is a problem, Mr. Nicolason, and I think the long-term fix is probably something we're not going to like, but it's, it's, it's got to, we've got to be thinking about a parking garage.
So for now, could we get some pricing on signs? And not to go too far off of what you said, but you said anywhere to include China. I would suggest maybe even talking, I know a lot of people don't like it when I say this, but talk to the city of Casper because they have their own sign department over there and maybe they could tell us the cheapest route of going to get these signs made or potentially partner with us to get it done.
Are you acquainted with the city of Casper? Is that China?
Yeah, no, any of the, the building side and construction side, Commissioner Mill, I haven't done any of that portion. I was just trying to put together where employees are parking because those are the initial calls that I get. Hey, I've got some, I broke my leg. I'm going to be on crutches for the next six weeks. Can I get a closer parking spot? You know, it's those type of things, those type of calls that I get. And so that's what I was focusing on. Of course, this blows up. And then after you start talking to the other departments and then you start bringing in the courts and the building side, like I have not done any quotes, anything on the building side. So between Tom and I, we'll get costs on.
Yep, get cost on signs.
Soliciting help.
That would be amazing.
Yes.
I am not the expertise in that area. Not the expert.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a Band-Aid, you know? Signs are just a Band-Aid.
Sure.
It's going to, it's got to take some more high-powered thinking than a Band-Aid because it's worse than we think, I believe.
See you soon.
Is that it?
You will.
Very soon.
55 minutes? Wait, no, I have to wait for breath.
This is drive.
Leader?
I don't know that this will be near as exciting as the previous items on the agenda, but I am confident we'll get through it. As you all know, I've been working on, I guess, for lack of a better word, cleaning up the older ISDs in the office. And I'm not sure how the chair would like me to, would you like me to discuss, I guess, the resolution certifying first or the public notices?
Whatever is the most streamlined and efficient.
Okay. Absolutely. So the, how about we start with resolution, that's marked 31-23, and that's the full speed improvement. You all last session or the session before, I honestly don't remember, had signed the notice of publication, letting everyone know that full speed was in danger of being dissolved. That did run. I did double check the Star Tribune to make sure we got what we paid for. So the next step would be this resolution initiating dissolution. And that's what I presented today. And it goes through, and there's no attachment to this one. And full speed is represented by Pat Holsher, and so this one should move fairly quickly.
So does that mean Pat is in favor of this? What, what does it mean when you say it should move pretty quickly? Because I, I think, you know, as long as we've made an attempt to communicate with some of the people that actually live out there, because what is going to be a train wreck is if somebody that lives out there says, oh, I didn't know about this because I don't get the newspaper.
Well, it was also, sir, to answer the second question first, it was also posted on our website. I, I, I know, I don't, but it was posted there as well. And there's several steps that we have to go through with respect to actually dissolve it, as you know. So we still have time or there's time if other members. And just a little, I'll answer the neck, the other question. So Mr. Holsher represents them in the sense that he will be very helpful and has agreed to provide when we do our findings of facts and the dissolution plan, he will have that information for us and will actually have something to work with. Because if you see some of the other resolution certifying dissolution I'm going to talk about, we don't have some information. But I was just meaning, because we have an attorney to work with, that it should go a little bit smoother. And we received, and so did full speed, two letters from the Department of Audit, so there's no choice whether he agrees with it or not. But in this case, they do want it dissolved. But the statute mandates that because they're not in compliance with the Department of Audit, that we, or you all, I guess, initiate those proceedings.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
So whether it's this one or moving forward with the other ones, any of the planning and zoning, like zone changes or whatever, we require that department to send out notices to neighbors within whatever distance. Would it not make sense to send out letters of the titled landowners, whatever their address would be wherever, but just at least send those letters to the address that we have, like we do for the planning and zoning, to any of those landowners within the district?
So Commissioner, with respect to, I guess, what's called a courtesy letter, we do and we have historically done that. However, historically, and we're happy to have discussions and if you'd like it changed, that letter goes to, I guess, the last known address and/or the last known, I guess, board member.
Right, but at least we've made the attempt at that point to notify all owners.
And so if you, we can, in this case, I think we would have more luck with letters and appropriate information because we have a contact. And some of these older ones, because we're trying to get them caught up, we don't have any information. But if in the future you would like us to try to contact as many individuals as possible.
Within that district, whatever it's closing. I think, I, I just feel that that would be, I mean, if we can do it for planning and zoning, it seems like we'd be able to do it for this.
And I'm happy to go ahead and send out those, I guess, courtesy letters. We've received this, this is why we're doing this, please contact us or we will need to proceed with dissolution. Or shall.
That, that's my personal.
Sure. That's fine.
I agree.
Okay. Well, I can go back and do that for full speed, although they are represented by an attorney.
Just, I'd say move forward at least.
Okay. Okay, well, that is perfectly fine. We can get those sent out.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what do you, how do you notify people of this?
Well, if they are required to be dissolved because of the Department of Audit and they're not in compliance, the Department of Audit notifies us, notifies the Improvement Service District, and then we do another courtesy letter after the second one.
Directly to the person?
Well, directly to the contact information that we have. Now, where do I get that? Well, it could be from the Department of Audit letter, but I also check with Ms. Berry because she has different information and different databases. So I try to find at least one good contact. But again, these are older, so moving forward, maybe it won't be such a process to try to find someone. Or for example, in one of these coming up, Commissioner, the contact person has dementia and I didn't feel it appropriate to contact her and try to, I don't want to upset her or, or get misinformation, so I did not contact that contact person. But there's nobody else to give any other information. So each situation's different, but again, I believe it's because it's just we're catching up.
And I don't think, I've found at least, that most people don't read a newspaper anymore. They rely on social media, digital information. So I hope we start using as much of that as we can because you don't even get a paper every day anymore.
Yeah, that is correct. And we do have, and the Star Tribune, as you all probably know, they have very specific deadlines and requirements for publishing. That is statutory. And along with that, we again do put it on our website and then there'll be another notice that has to go out later on. But again, it is in the newspaper and then it is on our website.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I think what you're hearing is we don't want 40 people in here, you know, in a couple of weeks and be talking about how to undo this because they're not easy to put together in the first place. So I think you're hearing maybe something from all of us, or at least from many of us, that is, let's maybe do more than the statutory requirement. And if it means a stamp or if it means, you know, some other additional attempt to make contact with last known person that filed whatever with the auditor with, I don't know that it would be filed with the clerk, but let's, let's do try that.
Sure.
Just so things don't go south.
I'm a big fan of notice and due process, so I'm, we're happy to do that. And that's with respect to proposed 31-23 full speed. Does anyone have any more questions on this proposed resolution? Okay, so let's move. Now, these are going to be a little bit different than I guess we would all like, maybe. Looking at 23 dash, or sorry, 32-23, the proposed resolution certifying dissolution of the Clear Fork Improvement Service District. This is one that's older, as you can see, because it's January 7th of 2022. That's in the resolution. What happened with this one, and I don't want to misspeak, is I did speak with the contact we had and the attachments, we have one attachment, it shows that again, July 7th of 2022, they did what they believed was dissolving their district. And this, this is, I actually received this from the clerk's office. And also on that day, they voted. It's not exactly what the statutes may be looking for, but that's what we have. They're dissolved in their mind. And this particular contact stated, in her mind, it's dissolved and that's what her belief is. The next step, the way that we looked at it in legal was they've dissolved on this piece of paper, they took a vote according to this. The next step would be for you all to certify the dissolution. And as you all read, I was very specific and careful in the wording, it stated that you all, having performed their due diligence in this matter and having no further relevant information. And I did that because we don't have everything pursuant to statute. If you all have some guidance on how you'd like to proceed, that's great as well.
So my understanding and what you're saying is that they've agreed to dissolve the Improvement District. We don't have quite everything we need, but because of the way you worded it, we can go ahead and vote to resolve it, dissolve it?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they signed the July 7th, 2022, a resolution authorizing dissolution of the Clear Fork Road Improvement and Service District.
Okay, I was just trying to get the legalese out of that.
Okay, sorry. So yes, I tried to do my best with the information I had so you all could do your best.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. So it seems like one of the only ways that the county can actually participate in some of these roads that people are rightfully complaining about is do an Improvement Service District. So we're kind of yanking the rug out from under them. I'm not saying it's not appropriate. I'm not saying they don't want it in some of these cases, but if this is from 2022, should we send them a public notice that we intend to do this resolution certifying dissolution? I, I don't know, but, but again, you, you hear this concern.
Yes, and I, we're happy to do that. I did speak with my, the contact and she just made it clear that they believe it's been officially resolved or dissolved, but.
Do you have that in writing, in an email?
I may. These are just my personal notes. But we do have the attachment that there was a vote and she is the president or was the president and signed by her and signed by the secretary.
So, so two things.
Sure.
Have they held a meeting since that dissolution meeting?
No.
And have they received any public funds since?
They, I, they don't have any money. I don't know if they have received any public funds and then they thought they were dissolved and something could have happened.
I just sense it's clear back to 2022.
Right.
I don't disagree with Commissioner Nicolason at all that we need to maybe cover our. our base a just a touch more.
So you all would like a public notice to go out on this one? And this one would be 32-23, the proposed resolution for dissolution. And that's fine, thank you.
Is that being we're sending a public notice?
Notice out on everything, though? Because I think we have to have public notice out on everything.
Okay.
I mean, that's my opinion, so that's all I can tell you.
Okay. Then with respect to now 33-23, proposed resolution, in my mind's a little bit different because that Improvement and Service District did, in fact, and there are several attachments to this, back in 2021, they did hold an election. It was certified by the clerk's office. For some reason, this, what I call last step, did not get done. I, I don't know why. And they gave the names of the, I mean, they did a really good job for being pro se and under, and, you know, following the statute for the findings of facts. They included that, although they did not call it that. Though, and this is, let's see, Big River, I just don't want to give any information. There were, there were notes in our system upstairs, per Eric, that we have everything we need. This is another situation, or this is one of the situations where the contact had the dementia and I chose not to call.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that we can go ahead and vote to dissolve this one now because everything has been done, it just hasn't been the final step?
Yes, and I also put in there the two elements that are required for you all to do that. It's in the best interest, or it's in the interest, excuse me, of the people of the county. It's not active, and there's no need for the district. And I double-checked everything with numerous county departments, but in particular, I've included that the treasurer's office is not holding any funds for the district.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you to go through all these before we get down one more time.
Sure.
Just as an individual.
Sure.
Yay, nay, wait, or whatever.
Sure.
So...
Mr. Chairman, this one seems to me to be as well documented as can be. It's a little unfortunate that it, you know, the most recent thing is from, what, 22 May of 2022, but I don't have a concern with this one, although it's not very far off Gary Dome Road, and Gary Dome Road is a tough road to travel. But, but again, I don't have an issue with moving forward on this one.
Okay, so we'll need to remove some of these if we're gonna send out notice tonight from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to remove the Clear Fork, is that right? The Clear Fork and the Speedway? Is that what you're...
Clear Fork and full speed, yes. So that's 32-23 is Clear Fork, and 31-23 is full speed.
Okay. And at that time, we can just table those until a later date because we need more information?
Yes, and I will make sure that, I mean, the best notice we can give goes out on both of these. It's about, in case you all are wondering, and you might know that, it's about, we figured 50 bucks per public notice, and it is, shall be, according to the statute, charged or assessed to the ISD. And I do have one coming up where they do have some active money, and they know that. They know to withhold, you know, about 50 bucks for the service.
Okay.
But in these, I don't know who, there's no ISD to assess, and so I'm not sure.
Okay, so the only one we're gonna be voting on tonight then is Big River?
I'm sorry?
The only one we're gonna be voting on tonight is Big River?
Well, we have Big River, but we also have two basic public notices that are in the packet.
Hidden Valley, in Brant, God.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Sure. And then with respect to the public notice for the Brant-Gothberg Improvement District, with regard to that Improvement District, my contact is very nice, very cooperative. She emailed and stated they paid off their assessments in 2017, but they can't get the county to dissolve. I explained the procedure, and she will do whatever she can to help us. She believes she may have some information, paper information for us, but she doesn't believe so because it was back in 2017. Okay? And then with respect to the public notice for Hidden Valley, this again is just the basic public notice that you're in danger, and I spoke with my, the contact that I have. She's very cooperative. She states she, there's never been a meeting, there's no board, there's no records. I asked her, okay, so what's your role, or what was your role? She just stated she did everything. So this is the one, though, however, gentlemen, that they, they do have one thou, approximately $1,100 in their bank account, and they've had that since 2017. She keeps paying the fees on it. We looked up and any remaining money, or researched, I guess, and any remaining money goes to the treasurer's. Less, you know, I did talk to her about it, the notice, and I guess if the commission chooses not to assess that to an ISD, that's your call. So I did let her know. She'll try to give me what she has, she doesn't believe she has bank account records, and that's it. I did not ask for them yet because we're just on the first stage, so I wanted them to be current. And that's this particular ISD, Hidden Valley. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one slight question.
Sure.
So my question always is of our attorneys is, is, is this legal to vote on for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you for checking. Thank you.
So we're removing 3A, 3B?
3A and 3B.
Okay.
Now, are we putting those on for public notice?
No, they're just being removed, and she's gonna send public notice, correct? We're removing 3A, 3B off the consent agenda and...
Yes, we will remove the two, I did not write them down as the consent agenda, 3A and 3B, I apologize.
3123 and 3223.
Yes, correct. And we will do public notices on those, and I'll be back with those for you all to, to present to you all the next session.
Okay.
Everything else there is good?
Everything else is good.
Okay.
So the only things tonight is 3A, 3B will be pulled from the consent agenda, and then you want, somebody wants to move 3, where are we at?
Or remove the...
3E is its own separate item?
Yes.
Off the consent agenda for...
That is correct.
The MRG?
Yes.
And if you're going to approve the, the MOA additional services for $7,400 for the replat, I believe it was.
Do we add that onto the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I got it. I got it. And then after the consent agenda, I'm leaving.
Okay.
Okay, so we're adding the...
We're adding the replat to the consent.
Yep, to the consent agenda. Should we put that as another?
I would put that as a separate item, so it's clean. That is probably the better way to do it.
Yeah, I would put the replat as a separate item so that it's a clean vote, and it's not confusing to anybody.
All right. So on the consent agenda, we'll remove 3A, 3B, move 3E to its own item, and then add an additional item being the replat for $7,400 as a, as a separate item. And then those two items, I'll come back and open up for discussion, correct?
Yes.
After, and we'll approve the consent agenda as read, then come back on those two items?
Yes, yeah, I think that'll work fine, Mr. Chairman.
Got it. Heather, it's your turn.
Thank you. I did have one item for executive session, however, I, I think we can wait on that since we're running out of time. And so the update, I guess I have for you is just with respect to the bankruptcy issue with CC Cowboys. So Commissioner Laird has kept apprised of this, and then we've been kind of following the filings in the case. Earlier this month, there was a document filed with the, the bankruptcy trustees' notice to sell the liquor license. And then the trustee, in addition to that, has requested a stay of the, or an extension of the bankruptcy stay. So as you may or may not know, the license was set, license was set to expire, and then Mr. Elliott, I believe through his counsel, or was it, Jared knows better about the background than I do. Or was it Mr., was it Cowboys? It was...
It was CC Cowboys. So it was set to expire back in April, and then CC Cowboys filed the bankruptcy. There was initially a stay, an automatic stay put on that back in May. There was an additional stay that was requested, and the magistrate in that case granted the extension. At this time, they have entered into, essentially, a proposal to sell the liquor license. Part of the proposal they have does state that, A, the bankruptcy court has to agree with this, and B, it is contingent on what we decide as the county, so what the board decides. Once they do, actually file an application for a transfer. So essentially, it would be selling the liquor license to another individual, which we did in receiving the documents, that is John Johnson, that is proposing to purchase this. We're still waiting to find out whether or not the bankruptcy court is going to accept that agreement. I think there's still some time for any other parties involved to file an objection to that, but ultimately, it's gonna come back to us with that request at some point. The main question that we need to figure out is whether or not their transfer, essentially, our issue before with this license is once CC Cowboys didn't have a lease agreement, they, we were unable to even consider renewing the license. But then there wouldn't have been time to follow the statutory requirements for notice in granting any type of, if they had tried to sell the license at that point. Our issue now is we could potentially follow those statutory requirements because there is a stay, and we, the license would not be expiring, so we could have a hearing within the, or prior to 30 days from the expiration of the license theoretically. So we're, we're still doing some research with that to see exactly how, how that plays out, but that's mostly the gist of that update.
Now, Jared, is that, do you know where they want to put that license?
No idea yet.
Okay.
This is, it's just a proposal to sell the license, and then they would still have to go through the application process.
Okay.
Through the clerk's office.
Okay.
A comment. I did talk to Johnny Jay about that license, and of course, the license only has two days on it from when it, when that stay is lifted. And if, if he buys that, then the commission still has to approve that transfer.
Correct.
And I think we ruled once before, Mr. Chairman, that this kind of a situation is a transfer and is like getting a new license, so we're not bound by actually having to do anything. We're not obligated, so to speak. And I forget, I think he might have even mentioned to me where he was thinking about putting it, south, out in the county somewhere, obviously, but I just don't recall where he said it was. But it's a clever move by counsel for, with the guy who sued us.
I'd like a comment, too.
Commissioner Mill.
With this licensing hiatus, is there any way we can get some potential revenue from whoever is holding it up? Because we're not generating revenue on a license that's being held forever here?
Unfortunately, no at this time because the bankruptcy court...
It was facetious, yeah.
I do have a question of the clerk, though. When it comes to the liquor license itself, when a person applies or an entity applies for a liquor license, and then they do a name change on the business, do they need to come in and correct that on the license? Or, I, I do know that when you have multiple owners and one owner drops out and percentages change, that they have to come in and report that, but in doing a name change to a business, does it have to be corrected through the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the commission would need to be notified. I would have to research that because I, I haven't had that happen, so I would have to research that. Now, in this particular case, I also would like to check with the liquor division whether this would be a transfer or a new. Because the form, once I receive the form, I send it to the liquor division for them to check for completeness of the application. So, you know, as we're continuing talking about this or whatnot, I, I want to reach out to the liquor division to see how they consider it a transfer or a new application.
You know, I apologize, I segued off of what we were talking about, the last license, and I'm not picking on anybody in particular, but...
Only one guy.
Only one guy. But mile-high tight ends is now sidelines, and it no longer is mile-high tight ends. So with a complete name change and going back to an entity that used to have a liquor license in the city, and now it is a complete different name than what was originally brought in front of us here, do they need to come back in and make that name change official?
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you brought that up because I was gonna bring that up today if we had time. So that's another one that's on my radar to check into.
Okay. Her radar, not mine.
I think that, Mr. Chairman, you've succeeded. I don't think that bar is doing any business hardly at all. But I think that all it's changed is the name and not the ownership. And I don't know the answer to whether they have to notify the county or not.
I don't either, that's why I asked the question.
But Madam Clerk, on the issue of whether it's a new license or a transfer, what, what I understand is trying to happen here is it has to be a transfer involved because the technical owner of that is Sonny Pilcher. So he, they have to utilize a transferring process of some sort to get that into the name of Henry, and then he has to use some sort of transferring agency to get it into the name of John Johnson. So, so, but I think we've treated the transfer just like they were getting a new license in the past.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, in my mind, which is very small, the CC Cowboys' license was not renewed.
Right.
Therefore, and I don't know any of the ins and outs about the bankruptcy, so on and so forth, you know, just from conversation that we've had previously, that there wasn't a license up for grabs, so to speak, until all of this legal procedures got taken care of. So that's what I'm basing my thoughts off of as far as it maybe being a new license instead of a transfer.
Well, take, look at it this way. Let's say that Sonny Pilcher came in here, there was two days left on the license, he's had a buyer called John Johnson to buy it with his two days, he, all the hearing was set properly, to transfer it to John Johnson, it would be a transfer, it wouldn't be new. That's the essence of what they're, they're doing, even though the bankruptcy court has frozen the two days and turned it into six months. I think that's legally what's happened, so...
But the information that I provided the liquor division was that CC Cowboys' license was not renewed. It is in legal, it was, you know...
Right, but he, he could have done that if he, if he, if, he could have transferred it if he had two days left on it, even though it wasn't renewed. So what I'm telling you is, is by legal fiction, what they did in the bankruptcy court, he filed the bankruptcy, that froze that license with the two days. The two days is all that exists. So, so that has to be transferred somehow. And so that, so that's the county attorney's... And so that, so that's the county attorney's bailiwick to figure out if they can do that legally. But I think it is, it has to be a transfer somehow. And there's two days left on it, but they have to get it into Monty Henry first. And then he is intending on selling it to Johnny Jay, which is a transfer. And to get it himself is a transfer.
Well, regardless of how we do it, I have publication requirements that I have to adhere to. So, you know, I'll need to get as much direction as possible from county attorney and the state. But obviously, you're the licensing authority, so I think we have more discretion. So, thank you.
Or we object everything and just take it back and let them battle it out with the courts.
Okay, do you have anything else, Heather?
That was it.
Okay, Commissioner Nicolason?
Heather, this is just an agenda item, and anybody can weigh in on this. On the tax rule correction for 2022, or 2023, I see Contango Resources, $633,974.27. Did their taxes go up, since that's not in parentheses? That's, that's quite an adjustment upward.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So that should be, that should, unless it's a typo, right?
Yeah, I don't have any information.
Yeah, so it's $633,000 more to the county?
Right, unless it's a typo.
Well, I just asked Michelle if, and she hasn't responded yet, but do we have any? Okay.
Is that on Sinclair?
No, it, Contango has Midwest. But I guess, do they have Sinclair? No, they don't have Sinclair.
Okay, well, thanks. Just stood out.
Yeah, I'm afraid I don't, I don't know, Mr. Nicolason, if that's a mistake or intended there.
Any other questions for legal? Okay, I think that's it for the work session. So we can stand in recess until the business meeting.